This government meeting is brought to you by Eastworks and our local cable subscribers.
Right now I've got 7:05, so I'll officially open the Southampton Planning Board meeting for November 16, 2022. And as Dan alluded to, we have four members present. Paul was there a minute ago. Where'd he go? Oh, there he is. Okay. Cindy Palmer is absent. And on the agenda, we had originally scheduled a public hearing, a continuation of a public hearing for Red Barn Storage on a stormwater permit up there on College Highway. As you saw a few days ago, PHB, the peer review consultant, did their review. They're a little late with it, but that was because of some issues with EMS 4 bylaw, which we'll talk about later. But anyway, they got the report, but Mark Reed sent me an email yesterday, and he said, due to the time constraint, they would not have any of their report ready with all the list of items that John Furman and PHB found on the peer review. So they have asked to continue this hearing until December 7. Now, Richard, question for you, since this was entered in originally on October 19th again, when the hearing started, isn't the time December 5th on that, or will the letter of continuance be accepted?
Well, the 65 day clock starts when it's deemed and complete application is received. Presumably that was October 19th, and you'd have 65 days from that date to make a foul decision with the town clerk.
It was actually filed with the clerk on September 7.
But when was it deemed complete?
What's that, the application?
Yes.
It was, that's, I got everything on September 7.
Okay, then that's when the 65 day clock started. So you, I think you need to have, I really should have is something writing from them agreeing to extend the deadline for founding of a decision until a specific date that's beyond the next meeting.
Could you conclude by the email that, is that what they're requesting?
That's the, that's implied, and I think the board should take a vote to agree to extend the deadline to, I would suggest two weeks beyond the 5th, so you have ample time to write, have written and filed with the town clerk.
Right, well, our second meeting in December is the 21st, so I would recommend that continuation. Right.
And we need to vote that, and then need to file that with the town clerk.
Okay.
So I'd like a motion to extend until...
Please, please do so, Dan.
Oh, I was gonna go with December 31st. I imagine that's enough time for all the, all the paper to be shuffled around.
Well, it's, I'm going by meeting dates, so I believe we'll need to be on that, but we can go to the 21st. If you, or do you think it should be longer, Richard?
It needs to be a time after which you believe you're gonna write, actually approve the decision. Because the deadline is actually founding of the decision, the town clerk. So if you're gonna make the decision on December 21st, you really need to go to December 31st.
Okay, do so, Dan.
Okay, so making a motion to, to allow a continuation until December 31st for the public hearing of the Red Barn Storage Stormwater Permit. Richard?
Do I have a second? Oops, excuse me. Go ahead, Richard.
I'm assuming Dan is including in his motion to extend the deadline for founding of the decision on the application.
That, that's actually, that's what I meant to say. Yeah, thank you.
Sarah's second on that? Any other further discussion? All in favor, Dan?
Hi.
Paul?
Aye.
And myself, 400, so that I will get that information out to Mark Reed, and I was also send a memo to the town clerk regarding saying. Next up, we have a continuation of a public hearing for Doreen McKnight for a solar panel installation at 12 Rattle Hill Road. Original meeting was on October 19th, and it was continued. This is the second continuance. They had a laundry list of items that, which were given them at the last meeting, and they're now back to address those issues, and we've got Karen Robisho and Tom Genoski. Is Tom with you tonight? Yes?
Yep.
Okay. So Karen and Tom, could you bring up the laundry list in your submittals?
Absolutely. Good evening, Chairman and Board members. We came in with an incomplete application due to some reasons of not fully understanding what was required for full submittals. I believe we have all of our ducks in a row and addressed all the bullet points of the board, and tonight we should have a, a full plan for review. So Karen?
Yeah, I'm trying to bring up that first page right now.
Wonderful. So we have a solar ground mount project that appears in the rear of the property. We have updated all the setback requirements, including the...
Tom, could you just hold on a minute till she brings that up?
No problem.
All right, why don't you start from the this page and then go forward to your, your plan again?
Okay, great. So the first reasons we had any questions were due to the official plot plan and site setbacks that were not properly depicted on all pages. We've corrected that to show that the position of the ground mount meets or exceeds all required setbacks. So the front yard setback has been accurately updated and stamped by civil engineering, and it exceeds 108 feet to the location for the ground mount. The side setback was not clearly visible, depicted incorrectly. That side setback has now been updated to 79 feet, and it exceeds that setback by a far distance. The rear yard setbacks are all now clearly depicted stamped by civil survey engineer based on the current site plot information. One thing that we had to address was the absolute height of the rear of the structure, which was clearly depicted on page six and seven of all prior submissions, but we're just calling it to attention and clearly itemizing exactly where it's listed. So the total rear height of the array, total highest point, will not exceed the 15-foot bylaw requirement. Next, we have other relevant provisions, which include some type of visible screening, which is really a commercial bylaw for large solar arrays that are, you know, public, I would say more contributing to public visual nuisance. This has a topography that is descending in the rear yard. So the further back we go, the further the ground mount becomes less visible. So we were asked to put together any type of waivers that we were asking for, and we're asking the board to grant a waiver to impose unnecessary screening on the McKnight family due to added cost and provisioning of that screening. Those address the first page. Karen, do you want to go to the next one? And this is for an 8.8 KW solar ground mount of 22 panels, very small rear, single-family dwelling. Just to recap. So the other points we're gonna address are in regards to the plot plan, the endangered species flood plains, and conservation activities at the site. So we were asked to reinforce the civil engineering aspect of a professional land survey. All data was pulled from public plot surveys on file and updated with the property deed parcel land surveys from the most updated parcel maps and depicted properly and referenced and checked by our civil engineer. Property lines were pulled from the database and properly depicted, as well as signed off. So that's a prior point we addressed. Again, the height was also addressed. In the rear of the site plan, we also were asked about conservations and wetlands. So the customer, the McKnight family, they have a proposed well overflow, which is over the 100-foot buffer from our current construction activities. That well overflow has now been listed properly and is not subject to vernal pools per the NHESP maps. And we are definitely without, or outside the 100-foot buffer. So it should not be any type of conservation activity or require any further follow-up. We did, we double-checked and uploaded on the site map the current 2021 FEMA map. Looks like the entire town of Northampton is not in an eligible FEMA flood plain. So we put that in there just for good measure.
You mean the town of Southampton, correct?
Southampton, sorry about that. Yeah, the town of Southampton. And we looked at the entire town, and it doesn't look like there are any real eligible flood plains, to my knowledge, based on that map. So we uploaded that to our site plan just for further reassurance that this is not in an eligible flood plain, not in any Army Corps of Engineers easement, and any other applicable endangered species or priority habitats.
Could Karen once again bring up the, the plans?
Is there anything specific you'd like to be shown?
Well, I just want you to have it there handy. I'm now gonna ask questions from our consultant and also board members. Richard, anything that you'd like to cover?
No, I think they made, they stamped the plans. I would note that when he mentions the height of the structures, when I try to zoom in on pages six and seven, it got too blurry to really read the information. But I think that's, they've addressed in writing, and I have no comments, no other questions.
Any questions from the board?
Can you just go back so we can see the exact location with the reference to the street? I see, from what you showed earlier, you're asking for a variance for screening?
Yep.
So that's why I was just curious to see from this point of view. I don't know, from my take, it seems like everything was addressed. The only question is the variance.
Correct. Paul, Dan?
You're not talking about a variance. It's a waiver.
Waiver, correct.
There's a significant difference.
Correct. We asked for a waiver.
Paul? Are you there?
Yeah, I'm here. I don't have any questions. I guess the discussion for a waiver is the screening that, that the board should probably undertake if there's any discussion needs for it.
Okay, let's wait until, since there are no other questions outside of that for the time being, I'm gonna open up to the, the public and ask people that want to comment to state their name and their address and go from there. So at this point, any member from the public that's joined us have a comment?
Yes, my, my name is Jack Fariter, and I'm from 1669 Northampton Street in Holyoke. And I'm here representing Carol and John Defonte, who are the abutters. The picture we're looking at right now on screen share, they're the abutters at the top of that picture. And their major concern is, and the 50 other neighbors who have signed a petition against this solar project in a residential property is, and you may have heard this before, and I apologize if you have, but this is, there are 50 people in Southampton who are against this proposal. They're in favor of solar, but most solar, as the board knows, in residential areas is rooftop solar. And I'm told that at earlier meetings, it was indicated that because of a roof, that this could not be a roof-mounted project. But I represent several utilities and several solar developers, and there are ways of putting ballast on metal roofs and other flat roofs, rubber roofs, so that you can attach a solar panel to a roof without making a penetration. And so the 50 neighbors and, and the Defontes particularly, who are most impacted, would prefer that this be a roof-mounted project. First of all, so that the neighbors don't have to see it as they're driving down the street. This is a, Rattle Hill Road has been designated a scenic road by the town of Southampton under a Massachusetts program. And if, if for some reason the developers here don't want to make this a roof mount, then the very least they should do is put this behind their house, which would mean moving it closer to this well overflow so that the neighbors don't see it. I would suggest that the reason the developers here want to put it in the side yard is so that they don't have to look at it. So I think that the fair thing to do for the people driving by and the abutters is to move this project to the rear of the property. The developers are the ones who are benefiting from this project. And if they want a ground mount, then they should at the very least put it behind their house so that it doesn't impact people driving by. The third thing they should do is, is lower. By my math, 155 inches is approximately 13 feet high. I've seen many solar ground-mounted solar projects that are much less than 13 feet high and that would necessarily be screened or shielded from the street, from the neighbors. And I'm also told that this project would provide electricity over and above what this house would need. So effectively, this is, the developers here are gonna be running a small business by selling electricity to Eversource, making money. And this is not a commercial, this is not zoned for a small business. So just to summarize, number one, it should be roof-mounted, like almost every other solar project in Southampton and in other towns. Number two, if for some reason they prefer not to use ballast and, and roof-mount their project, then they should put it in their backyard, not in a side yard that's, that's pretty close to the street, pretty close to the neighbors. And you do have 50 neighbors who have signed a petition against this project. And of course, the planning board well knows that in order to approve something like this, it can't injure the character of the neighborhood. And here, you have 50 neighbors who are saying that this this small business, this small electric generation project is gonna injure the character of the neighborhood. So it would be prudent to have the planning board reject the project as proposed as being injurious to the neighborhood, not only based on the 50 signatures, but also on the fact that this is a scenic road, that this project is visible from the road, visible by the abutters, and even further, that they're asking for a waiver of screening, which any kind of ground-mounted solar project requires screening. And certainly, the stipulation, if there's gonna be a 13-foot tall, is that the arborvitae's or whatever kind of screening would have to be 13 feet tall in order to screen this project from the street and from the abutters.
Paul, do you want to take this one, or do you want me to?
You can comment if you'd like, Mr. Genoski.
Well, sir, thank you for all of your comments, but, you know, you absolutely do not have a summary of the impact of this project. This is a small, single-family, single-phase dwelling. This is not a commercial application. Nobody is benefiting but the end user, who is the family who is trying to save money for this project.
Is it true that this will cover 110% of their usage?
That is correct, but it is a guaranteed production. Solar is based on estimates. These are estimation softwares. It could do 90% one year, or it could do 100, or it could do 110 another year. So it is false for you to say that somebody is monetizing the value and preying on this as a commercial investment when this is absolutely to save the McKnight family money. And for you to come in here and say that there are 50 people that are, you know, blocking this from happening, show us the proof. Give us the petition. Don't come here and tell us that this single-family project that somebody in their, you know, age 70 is trying to save money just to put a solar project on their ground and not penetrate their roof and add leaking holes to their roof because they have property is a false application of somebody trying to do the right thing for their home, for their energy value, for everything that this type of project means.
Mr. Genoski and Mr. Fariter, this isn't a debate. There's public comment, and then Mr. Genoski can answer your questions, which I think at this point he's probably done, but this is not a forum for a debate. There's an option to give public comment, and then the board will discuss.
Yeah, thank you for mentioning that. Thank you, Sarah, because there's, there's not gonna be, we can't have back and forth on this. You state your, your, your claims and let it be at that. I will, I will make a couple of things clear that there was a petition that was sent to the planning board about the scenic byway, but according to scenic byway, we, we don't find that it applies because any kind of alterations have to be within the right-of-way of the road. And this is 108 feet away from the road, so there is, there is no impact on the, the right-of-way of the road as the scenic bylaw reads. Who else has a comment? Anyone else?
Yeah, hi. Can you hear me? I am on, can you hear me?
Yes, what's your name, please?
My name's Aaron McGrath. I live across the street. I'm at 13 Rattle Hill Road, right across the street from Doreen's house. I, I really, listen, I, I'm glad that she wants to get this done and get it done. The only thing I'm, I want to add to it is that I would hope that it would be, you know, you know, that somehow we'll be looking at the side of this thing or whatever it is. It's just that they could have put some, you know, some bushes or, or whatever around, you know, at least to block it from the street, and so the neighbors don't really have to look at it, but that's my only opinion. I don't have any problem with her doing it. It's just, you know, whatever. I mean, it would be nice if it was just like shielded so that you wouldn't necessarily see it from across the street, you know, so it's just more bush, you know, just cover, you know, make it look respectable instead of just having a bunch of pipes and whatever over there and the ground mount. I don't, you know, that's all I'm asking for. I mean, I'm, that's it for me.
I would like to also make a statement, Mr. Fariter, that in my time on the board, which has been about 12 years, I personally have sat on this board and approved at least four to five ground mount installations for homes in Southampton. And they are in people's yards, and they're in closer proximity and neighborhoods than this is. This is much more rural than some of the ones that we've approved, so we have, we have approved them in the past. And you had your hand up.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Fariter. So I just want to make two quick points. I thank you very much for your time. The fact that 50 neighbors have signed a petition that the planning board has received, that this is a scenic road, and from this scenic road, you can see this ground-mounted facility. And so the logical thing to do would be to move it behind the house. If they insist on ground-mounted, that you move it behind the house where it cannot be seen from this scenic road and keep the 50 people who have signed that petition happy. The other option, as I mentioned, is if they choose not to penetrate their metal roof, which, you know, everybody who has a roof-mounted transformer penetrates their roof, but there's also technology to use a ballast that goes from one end of the house to the other, and it's a pipe, and so you don't penetrate. So I don't know if the engineers are not familiar with ballasts on roofs to mount panels, but it's, it's certainly available and available to these folks, so...
Sir, with all due respect, this is a pitched roof application. It is absolutely not available for this project.
Yeah, excuse me. I, I thought he was not gonna be debating, but...
I think he was answering a question for you.
I didn't ask a question, but thank you for the information. But certainly, if they, if they think they can't use ballast in this particular facility, that moving the, the, moving the project to the rear yard of the house would make the most sense.
Any other comments?
Yes, I have a comment.
Who is this?
My name is Doreen McKnight. And the comment is, I cannot move it to the back. There's trees in the back. There's no sun. We get, we get shade from the side where, where the overflow comes. It's, we're not gonna get any solar gain from moving it to the back of our house. There's all brush in the back and high pine trees that, that are on the side of the property line that go right over the back property. It has to be where it can collect some, some light from the sun. I mean, that's the purpose of this, to get, to gain the solar. And our, and our neighbors, no matter where we put this, are up on a hill and look down on our property. Both houses directly across, not only the McGraths, but the Sudnicks. Their property sits way up high on a hill above, on the other side of the street. And it looks down at us, and Defonte doesn't even have a house there. And if he does have a house there, then he would be looking in the, into our backyards from the side of his backyard. then he would be looking in the, into our backyards from the side of his backyard. Now, this man has had this property since two thousand and seven, when I sold it to him. And all of a sudden, this is a big issue. I'm not trying to cause problems, but I'm doing what's best for my family and best for the environment. And we have to look at solar. We cannot put it on our roof. We have already talked to our, our people that put the roof on our house and it will take the guarantee totally away from my roof. So I'm in a rock and a hard place from people. Where they got fifty signatures, I have no clue. Because I, I would be willing to have people come right over here and look at this piece of property. Because I don't feel I'm doing anything wrong. And for me to do something for myself and my family when I've helped everybody in this neighborhood, my opinion is this is, this is outrageous. I don't know where to go from here. I really don't.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Anyone else from the public wishing to speak? Any other questions from the board? Now, you want to address the screening on the, on the unit itself?
Paul.
Go ahead, Richard.
Um, would it help me to s- screen share Google Street View so people can have image of what it looks like from the street with the trees in the back, et cetera?
If you'd like to.
Good idea. Thanks, Richard.
Uh, can't share, they need, stop this.
Karen, uh, yeah, back out of that, Karen, please, okay.
This is the Get Google Street View, and I believe this is the area they're planning to put it in. And you can see the trees that uh Mrs. McKnight was referring to. They do get, appear to get taller as go behind the house. And that would, obviously appeared with the house here, trees back there that would appeared to reasonably, uh, I think reasonable interpretation, that would diminish the uh ability to get solar gain from the panels. Uh, the question, it it does look kind of visible here. The question is, would six to eight arborvitae's plant in this area provide some breakup of visual image of the panels? And I know people don't plant or plant trees, but arborvitae's are fairly inexpensive and they're quick growing. Just a thought.
And they've been used, and they've been used in other projects, uh, too. There's several of them you see around, yeah. Sarah?
Because I want to say one thing, you know, I I drove by here actually earlier this week and I'm also looking at the street view because it goes down the slope. You wouldn't need something, in my opinion, that's as tall as the panels to do a decent job of breaking it up. You know, you could have, and not that you need to fully block it, in my opinion, to be honest either, but um I just think the slope kind of makes it so from the street view, you could more easily block something without a full height.
I would echo uh Sarah's point is, you don't, I don't think you need to totally block it. Plus, when you look at any sort of panel array, yes, the top of it stand, may stand thirteen feet, but the majority of it's going to be below ten feet. Probably below eight feet. I mean, that's the bulk of it. So if you plan something that doesn't necessarily create a invisible barrier, but breaks up the image of it, you're probably going to have the effective effect of substantially breaking that, breaking up from public view.
Now, are we also talking, are we talking street side? Or we also, uh, do we have to consider the abutter um adjacent to the lot as well, even though there isn't a house there?
On this at the board, uh, I always look at from the street view from public view, um, the bylaw refers to residences as well. So I think that's up to the board and make the interpretation.
Paul, Dan?
Uh, I'm, I'm at the, at the point where through all the discussions, I feel the, the, the the, I, optimal solution for everyone involved is the, some type of uh plant screening on the, the northbound side of the solar panel array.
I agree. I think just something, you know, to break it up to some degree um on, on the north side, on the street side would be sufficient um, from my point of view.
Yeah, I, just to echo that, that statement, um, there has to be some sort of compromise with, with the street being somewhat shaded um with, with uh abreviate or something that could break up that view, um. So it looks like it's not this, this mass of, of, of solar panels right near the street there.
Do we have a number to put on it? Where we to condition this? On how many of the plantings? I mean, I don't know, I don't have, uh, maybe Tom can, uh.
Excuse me?
Maybe Tom can uh chime in on this about the the length of that uh, that field facing the street.
Could you, excuse me?
Yes.
This is Doreen again.
Yes.
The picture you're looking at with that thing sticking up in the middle, that's our leach field. That's and we can't plant in our leach field, so and, and the panel's going down further in the back from our leach field to the left a little bit. And not where you're, down, yeah, yeah, down over here. A little further down in the back.
That should be far away from it, though. Far enough away from it.
I don't know.
So if you put up the plan, let's open this, show it on the plan view, where is the leach field?
Can Karen, can Karen bring that plan up again? Please. Okay, Tom, can you walk us through this?
I certainly can. So the leach field is right in between our sixty-two point five foot mark, a little bit north of northwest, northeast of the white drawing you can see there by the sixty-two foot line. So the array here is one, two, three, four panels, long at seventy-four inches. And we're talking about twelve feet of exposed rear. So we would need, if we were to screen even anything reasonably, it would be eighty inches by twelve feet in the rear, so eighty divided by twelve. That's six feet by twelve feet in the north corners, northwest corner here.
So why don't we, why don't you put abreviate closer to the street side so you can miss the leaching field?
So you could do that and you could probably just, you know, go with a few less than if you were to try and screen a twelve by six area. And you could position them, you know, right there, yeah, thank you for, for filling that in. But, you know, that's a little bit lo- way longer of an area that you'd be looking for. So, I mean, the, the question here to the board is if we put it here, it's a matter of field of view, right? So if you didn't line the entire property, there is a point of view that you'll be able to see things from.
So I think consideration needs to be given to the director butter run across the street who asked for that particular uh screening. I mean, he's, he's probably the most impacted by it being right there.
And I believe it's the abutter who's to the north, not just across the street. So the side property here that is being considered. But there's nothing in the bylaws that states the screening requirements, and I do agree that, you know, we should give consideration in all reasonable areas. You know, however, there isn't a, a bylaw that states that this small solar array should be subject to the screening requirements.
We have done it in the past, though, Tom.
Okay, no problem at all.
We have.
I think it's uh, it's up to the McKnights at this point to work with the board. I can provide any other details and information that anybody has questions for, uh, but I'm here as a developer and uh, what you guys agree to impose uh is something that you guys will have to work through.
Well, I think given the concerns and um we, we have to um be somewhat cognizant of the the concerns uh as they've been laid out for us in the past two or three meetings, so uh it was really the, the only bone of contention, um, so it's something we, we really should consider, so.
Oh, I guess.
Go ahead.
Oh, I guess the biggest concern here is now is defining a set layout. Because last time, and I'm going to bring up that property on the former um, at the former and Russellville intersection that I drive by uh on a frequent basis. That was probably done seven years ago, I think. Um, and we, we were very broad in um leaving it to the homeowner to um put up some sort of screening, which they put up a couple of fruit trees that probably aren't you know, going to grow that high, um, and you know, the slope there, you know, has that, that solar mount, you know, front and center, and you see it there. And frankly, it is a little bit of an eyesore, in my opinion. Um, one mistake that I think we did as a board was not providing any definition or anything measurable to document what we want to have out there. I'm not telling him that he needs a landscape architect to, to, you know, to, to lay out a plan. I think we want some um something right now that we believe will be a suitable screening from the street side to not have this um be an issue later on, so. You know.
So you don't think conditioning the number of arborvitae uh in the permit is adequate enough?
I think that should be suitable, but I think we need to be have some surety that's going to be appropriate, so.
Yeah, and, you know, and hopefully the building inspector follows up on his part of the bargain on this, too.
Understood. I think, you know, we, we should probably also understand, you know, that we can't just say, ah, abreviate, that's, that, that they need to put, let's say, eight of them in. And they go out to Home Depot and they buy the one that's like two feet high and it's going to take ten years for it to get to a to a cover of height. I, I don't think that's suitable either. I think we should probably establish a, you know, those are relatively inexpensive. But the point that I'm trying to make is we should probably establish a height, uh, minimum height that those should be right there um, for the benefit of the neighbors.
Can I say something?
Go ahead, Ms. McKnight.
I wish, I wish you would all come over here and look at my property and go across the street and see how far up these people live on their land that goes up a hill, both, especially the ones across from me. They're up on a hill. And if you go and sit in their front yard and you tell me how many, how high I need to plant something that's going to cost me some eighty feet tall, not to see this. I don't think I'm being unreasonable. But these people are looking down on my land and they live up a hill. They'll look, and I said it before, they're looking with binoculars. I am not trying to do something that's against the town, but I need to do something here.
I don't.
We would like the town to come out here and look at this property.
I personally am quite familiar with the road. I, I know exactly where you are and it, I don't think it's, to me, it's not a part. It's not about elevation, whether they're looking down or they're looking up. It's about the, the ob- object of the uh, the installment itself that um is not it's something out of the ordinary that uh, you know, you don't see a lot of. Um, so we have to be uh considerate of the concerns we've heard, and that's how we have to look at it.
Okay, okay, I understand, but I know that Fletcher's has one you can see right from Route ten.
Well, he's also agriculture.
Okay, all right. Um, I just, I just, I can't even believe how, how much of a problem this has been for me.
I, I empathize with you, believe me. I um I have solar myself and I, I wouldn't want to sit through this either.
No, I mean, talk about stress, you know, um.
Thank you, Paul. Thank you, Doreen, for everybody's support.
Mr. Fariter?
Yeah, just very quickly, Mr. Chair, um, you know, I understand you're looking at uh conditioning the permit on some arborvitae's uh screening the street. I would just, uh, of course, the board knows that you need to not injure the neighborhood. And certainly the neighborhood would include the abutting parcel that Mrs. and Mr. DeFante uh bought from Mrs. McKnight and that they absolutely plan on building on. Um, so the neighborhood would include the abutters, uh, we would respectfully uh request. Thank you.
Thank you. So what are we looking at for numbers here if you want to define this condition? Do you want to take a guess?
Can you get the plan up?
Yeah. We could probably do it by angle.
Karen, can you bring that up one more time, please?
Well, let me get my scale here on the screens, so I can measure the distances here. I don't think that's what was meant to be.
And I have no idea how far you, you know, I know arborvitae's uh spread out quite, quite rapidly, so I don't know what the uh spacing is. It's quite a bit.
Typically, it's four feet for abreviate is the recommended spacing, depending how, how big they get. Obviously, there's a bit of a span that would have to be covered if we considering um both uh street screening as well as the adjacent property screening. They would do a much better job if they were closer to the, to the proposed solar units um rather than the street side, but on the street side, you know, um. I, I, I'm just, I'm just going to say it, it seems like it's going to end up quite a bit to a distance if you consider every, one every four feet um on the front side.
Tom, are you, was, you're still there?
Still with us, yep. Thanks, Paul.
So are you going to, so are you sure that any plantings are going to impact that leach field?
The, the plantings should not impact the leach field. Leach fields are typically spread out and most of anything is four feet down for any of the actual piping that comes to it. I'm pretty confident that we won't impact it, but I do think it's a point to bring up. If it does affect the project, construction is construction. You know, we find out that it impacts the project, it becomes a major issue. You know, I don't want to impose more work here than, than's necessary on the McKnights.
No, but I'm just trying to figure out if it's, as Paul said, to, to get them closer to the uh structure rather than more toward the street.
I think there's a happy medium between the structure and the street. The further up the hill they are, the better coverage they'll provide from the street. And I would propose, you know, no more than four at the rear, maybe two on the side, six total. And we space them adequately away from the rear height of the arrays, that there's no potential shading issues and in, in ranges of six to ten feet. Six feet will grow to ten feet in a very short period of time. And that would be due to the angle of incidence. If it's uphill, we're most likely shading the thirteen feet, so nobody will see it.
Yeah, I don't think those distances are adequate. The number of those units um of abreviate is adequate. Um, you know, I just, you're probably looking at at least eight on the street side. and at least four on the, on the, on the adjacent property side.
It might be clear to communicate what, what that number represents if we could. Can we annotate this picture? Can we draw this? Is this a whiteboard? Can I draw on this?
There's a draw feature that's on the bottom left. I'm not sure if he's on the Abra computer, but there's a draw feature. I have it on my iPad. There's a, there's a pencil pad.
Oh, I can't, it says I can't use it because I'm just thinking, if you know, if first, if we talk about, say, the center, starting from the center distance, center of the solar panels and talking about what angle, angle, angles we'd want covered, then you talk about what distance and how many trees you would need, right? So that can be a way you can define it.
Say that again, I'm sorry.
So i- if you, if you look at the, if you look at the solar panels and the way they're oriented, they're basically facing the, 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 there's two panels on the nor-, the most northerly side, right? So if, if you were to say plant the, the plants very closely to uh, to the solar panels, you, you would get a larger field of view coverage of the, of the solar array than if you plant them further away. So I, I just want to establish how, what distance.
I agree. I, and thank you so much for, yeah, bringing that up. So I was in the same thought process. And if we were to cover a four-foot perspective, the array is a 24-foot length and a 12-foot length on the opposing side. So the street side is 12 feet and the rear side is 24. So I just did simple math, dividing, you know, the four-foot mark and putting six in the rear and for the 12 mark, I put the three or four.
Okay, how many feet, so you, how many feet away from the panels were you assuming?
When I reduced my numbers, I reduced my numbers to four and two. I was putting them at least 10 feet up the hill, so it kind of was providing that field of view. So you would have a reduced angle of incidence to see when you were all the way away, but it depends on where your field of view is coming from or your vantage point.
Yeah.
That's what I was suggesting to overlap with Dan. That's what I was saying. You're going to have at least eight uh, on the street side. Um, and at least four on there. Uh, you know, frankly, I, I think Paul, I, I think the flexibility there is to, to coordinate with the planning board and the building inspector. We can talk about this until we,
Yeah.
we, we, you know, start talking about the number of pine cones that are, number of seeds that need to come out of these arborvitae. Um, I, I think for the sake of this, I think we set a minimum here to, 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 to say that we probably need eight. Uh, at least four feet on center and we should establish a mature growth, not mature growth, but a planting growth that, that they should be at. So for example, um, you know, probably get six footers. I don't know what the um, maximum height is, but I think six feet is probably the maximum that you can get um, from a, from a nursery or from, from Home Depot or somewhere right now. Um, they, they usually don't sell taller than that um, based on my past experience. So I, I would suggest that, you know, there should be at least a six-foot height, uh, four feet on center, uh, and go from there.
All right. So, so you're recommending eight on the street side? I thought maybe six might be adequate.
Well, I was trying to cover some, some angles coming in from, from left and right of it. So, you know, putting it there, it just gives, it, it just going to give some coverage from a, you know, from either side.
So that's going to cover both sides?
Six and eight, or six and four. I'm sorry, I'm sorry, eight and, eight and four, I think we were saying.
So it's eight on the westerly side? Or the northerly side?
West.
Eight. Eight on the west, uh, eight on the street side.
Yeah.
Which is west.
Southside street side. I think we're forming a, the, the words of emotion here.
Sarah, have you got anything else you want to add?
No, I, I tend to probably agree with you that I, I thought maybe six would be fine, but I, I think it's kind of just I don't know, fine tuning at this point. I think it's fine.
All right. So let me retype it up and you can tell me if.
Well, you can, you can tell me that after we do the motion, but first of all, first of all, we have to make sure. So we've got all the information that was covered when we started. We've arrived at this point with the screening. Richard, is there anything else that you can think of before I ask to have the public hearing closed?
No, and again, mind that the bylaw says it's a meeting, not a hearing, but um, yeah, and I've, I have drafted up a decision that I left buffer blank as I wasn't sure I'd even come up with and incorporate that into it.
All right. So at this time, I will ask uh, our members, one of our members to make a motion and to take a second on it to close this uh, this meeting.
I move to close the public meeting.
Dan?
I.
You going to second it?
Second, yeah, sure.
Any other further discussion? All in favor? Sarah?
Hi.
Dan?
I.
Paul?
I.
You? And myself, I. Now I entertain a motion to approve the solar panel installation for the Doreen McKnight at 12 Rattle Hill Road with the condition that on the westerly side of the installation, eight arborvitae, six feet tall, which would be the westerly side, the roadside and four arborvitae, also six foot tall on the northerly side to uh, create some screening for the uh, facility.
I can thank them.
So do I have a motion to approve?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I drafted a written decision and I would like to show that it's a board can look at and, and I'd suggest approving the decision including findings on the criteria as part of your motion.
So you, I want to see a, a drawing? Is that it?
No, a draft decision. So I, I drafted a decision on.
Oh, 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 oh.
So I can share that on the screen and we can go through it real quickly and it, we would add in the buffer into it.
All right, go for it.
Essentially, it identifies who the applicant is, proper location, uh, summarizes the um, project. Uh, notes of meetings that were held and highlights the comments that were made during the public meetings, which tend to focus mainly on issue of buffering and screening and visibility and looking at alternatives. Uh, and then when you get down to, uh, the vote is, uh, and on conditions, I would incorporate the, in here that there'd be eight arborvitae planted on the west side, four on the east side and four feet on center with six foot, six foot on, at, at planting, not six foot total, but six foot at planting. And then.
Four foot, four foot planting, four foot, four foot on center.
Four foot on center, but height.
Six foot height.
Six foot height at planting.
Correct.
Right. Uh, and then incorporate the plans that have been submitted as part of the, the conditions that they have to adhere to those plans as revised by the, this decision. And then when look at, incorporate all the plans, all the application materials um, and the planning board minutes of the meetings as part of the record, part of the decision. It notes that is applicable and when expires. And then on the findings, again, go back to what we went through at the last meeting. Uh, the first item's not applicable, the second item not applicable, third, fourth, fifth, uh, sixth, uh, is noted there needs to be some screening, which you're addressing. And that's really all the findings the board would need be making is that mostly the condition, mostly the criteria really don't apply to this particular project because there is no wetlands, there's no flood plain, there's no cut and fill involved with this project. And that um, the only real issue is the screening. So I'd recommend that board in their motion approve, uh, make the findings as detailed in the draft decision and approve it subject to the conditions going on the buffer and the plans being followed.
Sarah, you want to make that motion or remake it a month again then, please?
Sure, um, move to uh, uh, approve this decision as drafted and presented by Richard with the buffer um, requirements as described.
And the findings, et cetera.
Yes.
Dan or someone second that?
Second, uh, Paul.
Yep. Uh, for any further discussion, go ahead, Paul.
No, no, I, I was wanting to second.
Okay, yeah.
Any other further discussion? All in favor? Dan?
I.
Paul?
I.
Sarah?
Hi.
Myself, I. Or oh, oh. Thank you, uh, everyone and Tom and Doreen and Karen, I will send you copies of the decisions once it is finalized.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda, we have uh, Ken Comia. Sorry to keep you waiting. You there, Ken? Take a little nap.
Hi, board. Um, it's always nice to be and to see um, what's going on in, in some of the surrounding communities and be part of, you know, these public meeting items.
Really?
I, well, I like, I don't often get to do that. A lot of the communities are not doing development review. So it's always nice to be part of that public process or at least be on this side where I'm observing. Not necessarily um, participating.
And you need to volunteer more.
Yeah, Ken, I was at the um, Huddok City Council, like City Council Committee meeting. Uh, I guess last night or month, yeah, last night I guess was. And uh, I watched them on a couple of very controversial uh, variance waiver requests, variance requests and made me so happy I wasn't, I was retired.
Yeah, it's, it's when it's your own, it's, it always can be kind of uh, um, anxiety inducing, I will say. Um.
Okay, so when we last met you, before you went on vacation.
And had COVID, I have to add that.
You had that too?
Yeah, it's been like, like a really crazy past couple of weeks and I'm still kind of navigating the, yeah, feeling what.
So tell me what you've come up with since we last we met about affordable housing.
So where we've left off, um, I think, and I'm going to share this initially with the accessory units, um, is we have, and I made some edits, um, I have both a version that has strike through underlying and the tracked version as well as a cleaner copy that doesn't have all of these changes. But um, I was going off based on some of the conversations we were having at previous meetings um, with regards to this particular bylaw. Um, and again, this is based on what could be your new numbering system. Um, I guess if you were to look at adopting this and if you had a strategy regarding doing this prior to um, your renumbering um, and reorganization, um, we can discuss that too. But um, since the last meeting, I think the only big changes that I made were specific to, and I was taking a leap based on what I was hearing in the room with regards to an attached versus detached product. I don't think there was um, a disagreement that um, you know, the board may want to look at having or allowing for detached accessory units. Um, but with a special permit, um, where attached could be issued with just a site plan review. Um, and that would be similar to what um, with the housing choice legislation at the state level, um, you would be able to pass those with majority votes um, rather than a two-thirds majority um, for a zoning warrant article. Um, so I amended this particular bylaw specific to um, adding the language for detached versus attached um, and just um, cleaning up um, some of the particulars of the permitting mechanism um, and making clearer um, for instance, like one apartment will be created within or on the same parcel as a single family home. And I think the only thing that I had um, then was um, the citation and, and Richard may have a better idea of what this should be. Um, where you have site plan review or approval um, within the, I was trying to look for it and I, I guess probably could spend more time doing it, but um, you have a special section for special permits with criteria and how you go about doing those permits. Um, similarly, I'm assuming you have something similar for site plan review. Um, the site, this application procedure wouldn't change per se. It would just go through whatever mechanisms you go through for either a special permit or a site plan review. Um, and I didn't change anything with relation to the owner occupied. I didn't know if the board had any considerations or thoughts regarding that. It, it doesn't, it's not addressed in the state language um, that it needs to be owner occupied and you can definitely um, as the board want to con, you can continue that um, particular um, administration of this particular bylaw. Um, and so I didn't really change anything with regards to um, how you interact with transference of ownership or even accessory apartments in existence to before the adoption of the article. Um, so this was changed to include now um, the ability to develop or look at detached accessory apartments um, versus how the town originally passed um, this particular bylaw as an attached accessory apartment owner occupied.
Ken, how is that going to affect uh, the septic issue or will it? By, by allowing detached?
You still have to go through your, your um, Board of Health review for any, but it shouldn't. Um, I know in some cases um, a nine hundred, a nine hundred square foot detached product um, typically has been permitted in other communities and there's no issues with the septic. Um, I haven't run in, in, into any issues with regards to that approval because you still have to go through an approval process. Um, so maybe that would control the size of what the accessory building could be. Um, however, I don't think it should, it should deter from the development of a detached accessory unit. I think really the biggest impact is an additional building that you'll see. Um, I know we also discussed um, that there may be some particular instances of garages having livable space above um, the garage in town. How do you address those? Um, can you foresee that type of development of garages having livable space on top because that is um, a detached product?
Mm-hmm.
Um, so I think with regards to septic, they, those types of permits would still have to go through. You'd have to go through that process.
Richard? Richard?
I agree with Ken, I think. Um, conceptually, it wouldn't have impact, but depends on individual property. Because clearly, if you're adding bedrooms, it could increase the size of the uh, septic field that's required. Uh, but again, the individual site is going to dictate whether that's a problem or not. And it would be the same whether it's being added to existence structure within or a detached. Uh, the larger the site, the more flexibility they'd have for detached, the more compact site, the more challenging it would be. So I, I think that's. Uh, though shouldn't alter the bylaw, that's simply going to be. Some that has to be taken consideration whenever somebody is going to use the bylaw. Um, I would note on the owner occupancy issue, there is a uh, interesting M A P D luncheon. Um, on discriminatory housing. And one of the things they noted is sometimes they look closely and they get a bit of concern. When they see accessory is tied to owner occupied occupancy of the housing. And that's something to be cautious about. They didn't say you couldn't do it, but you need, but it does raise their level of attention to it. And Ken regarding site plan review, they don't have a site plan review section of bylaw right now.
Okay.
Um, I would suggest, and I'm gonna suggest one of the changes making the bylaw. Under Solder, they've got site plan review and site plan approval, uh, which should be, I think, minor site plan view. And major site plan review because site plan approval is simply the end stage of a site plan review.
Okay.
The minor or major, uh, so I, that's the terminology I'd recommend to use.
So that's, that's a forthcoming change.
I would expect, I hope so.
Okay.
Now, you mentioned nine hundred square feet, did we, did we uh, agree on that?
That nine hundred? Changed, I, it is still six hundred, um, but if the board feels a certain way, nine hundred is. Probably typical.
Okay, so you bring up a good point if it's nine hundred, so somebody's got a garage, are garages typically bigger than nine hundred square feet? The two car garages or so?
Presumably.
Paul, you got any idea?
Oh, I'm sorry, I was talking to myself here, um.
Share it with us then.
So we ran into this before, I remember we had a flurry of 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 applications, I don't know, it was like three, four years ago. Where it seems like everyone was putting in, um. Uh, uh, an accessory apartment, um, and. Every, the, the six hundred foot threshold that we had initially identified were three hundred, six hundred foot uh. Space seemed very. Tiny and inadequate, um, in terms of like. I recall having this discussion years ago and. Your question about us, the size of a garage, um. It, it depends, you know, it, it depends nowadays in terms of, you know, what's in that garage, but. Nine hundred feet, that would be what, like?
It is three car garage.
By sixty by nine, oh, sorry, six by uh, thirty.
It'd be a huge garage.
Yeah.
It'd be a three car garage, three bay garage, basically twenty four feet deep.
So your average two car garage probably wouldn't qualify? Or would it, well, ac- actually, let me put it this way, if it's, is, is the nine hundred then, if we're talking about it, going to be the max? Can you, so could someone come in with something smaller, I'm assuming?
Yeah, so a thirty by thirty garage, I think is um, inadequate size, you know. For like, it was a square, but uh, cars usually, you know, twenty feet wide. I see, twenty feet long, um, it's, you know, we're, we're getting into the details here, but the point is, I think nine hundred.
Okay.
So the way that the state identifies it in their chapter forty, section one A definition, and I brought this up. Um, in one of the initial meetings was they identify. It as not large in floor area than half the floor area of the principal dwelling or nine hundred square feet, whichever is smaller, so. You know, if you're to change that, then probably makes sense to align with the state's definition. Um, and as to, to your point, Paul, um. I think that it could be less than nine hundred feet, nine hundred feet would be the max and I think. Um, nine hundred feet is probably what you're seeing in some of the other um, communities that are adopting. Accessory bylaw units, so they're just aligning themselves with the, the state.
I think that seems reasonable and I think it kind of can't hurt to follow what the state has set as um, a guideline.
Agreed.
Everybody on board with a detached uh, bervage, yes? Give that opportunity.
I think so.
It, it'll be interesting, I think that.
Yeah.
You probably will identify that, that, and I don't know the appetite for, I, I know that there's definitely discussions about. Development of housing a- all around um, the Pioneer Valley. Um, and but I don't know how it has been in your community, um, talking about detached products, but I know that. Some, in some community, it is a challenge to kind of navigate some of the. Both education component of like what this actually looks like and how it can be administered. Um, but I also am always um, trying to advocate for. A detached accessory unit, I think it, it makes sense in the scheme of.
Is this use going to be allowable in all districts or is it going to be uh? Excluding some, no?
I don't think you have it um, restricted in. The, the accessory apartment use restricted.
Yeah, there's, there's no, there, there's none in any zones, I, I don't believe, right?
Yeah, I don't think so.
I can't think of a, a reason why to restrict it in any of the residential zones. Different from one another.
Yeah. So. That kind of closes or puts the, to close or pretty close to your um. Your work then, Ken, with this, or was there something else pending?
So there's this and I'm going to show you the multi-family language, which had some minor changes.
Yep.
Um. And um, again, what I will share with you um, is. After I just include this new language um, regarding the forty forty eight definition, um. What I will share with you, Paul, is the track changes to show, you know, where the things were changed. And then a, a clean copy of the version. Um, so that'll be your product, and again, we have until. If, if you're finding something, at least when you get this at the next meeting or what, if you decide to want to discuss. I'm here to, you know, meet with you, um, however you'd like, but um, yeah, we'll, we'll. Go on to the next D L T A after I share this last um. Version with you for the multi-family. As Richard has said that you should be applying for the next D L T A round, which probably will be coming out in two months, so. Stay tuned.
When are they going to issue the invitation and when's the deadline going to be?
Typically, it is the middle of January. So like January fifteenth, um, I know that, I think that was last year and it closed. Uh, it was extended a week, so it closed the first week of February.
Okay.
Um, where, where are we here? So, some of the changes that um, happened since the last meeting were specific to. Um, creating the ability to develop two family. It's per, a permitted use um, in uh, the commercial district. Village and highway, and then a multi-family in. Commercial highway. Um, and then I think we just extended um, elderly housing to commercial highway with a special permit. Um, so those are some changes to the actual uses and where they're allowed. Um, I provided some definitions to look at, um, you'll see. Um, from, from this, what I changed it from, um, obviously, there's some changes that I included, which removed. Some of the language regarding families, um, and this is specific to units. Um, so multi-family being three or more and the two family with a very specific definition of. The building construction and what the structure looks like. The biggest difference from this since the last meeting was um, removing um. A, a, some language that was uh, that addressed exemptions for um. One bedroom units and housing for the elderly where um, this was for fa, for multi-family. Units of two or more bedrooms were the total, so there was specific requirements for open space. Um, so we remove that from the language or the, those that are exempt, they're no longer exempt, that's going to be proposed for. Um, the housing for the elderly. And um, there was a considerable conversation about setbacks and I don't necessarily re- recall. If we landed on something, um, but you do have dimensional regulations already as the underlying zoning. Um, and um, I know that it was suggested that two hundred feet was too big. Um, I don't know if you wanted a specific. Frontage um, for multi-family dwellings. Um, typically, if, if you wanted something, you would obviously have. A clause in here or a specific condition, however, the underlying um, dimensional regulations would be applicable here, so. I think depending on the district, you would have whatever those um, requirements for fronted setbacks. Um, and what that, those requirements are, so it's removing the specific. Um, requirements you currently have in your bylaw and just relying on the underlying zoning. And. Yeah, since the last meeting, those were the kind of, those were the really the, the bulk of the discussion. Was the setback and this discussion of open space. Um, you've seen this iteration at least two or three times and, and the changes in the uses. Um, where they're allowed, um. So I don't know if there are any more comments regarding this or any more considerations that you think. We should be addressing in the multi-family zoning um, bylaw, but yeah.
So. Multi-family is not allowed in R R or R N, huh?
No. And typically, I wouldn't necessarily see, well, it's again, it's, it's, it's three, so. If you were to look at a three family and wanted to create a sp- specific use for a three family, presumably could do that. And maybe it wouldn't deter from the language that um, you typically find, um. Where depending on what type of housing structure or what type of. Housing type or what type of housing would be found, found in uh. Predictably, single family detached product neighborhoods. Um, a three family may be a stretch, two families, you can see uh, uh, in the R N district and R V district, but. Um, yeah, this was kind of aligning with some of the, the already existing uses.
Richard?
I'd like to make a pitch for the idea that the board be given the authority to grant a waiver from. The frontage requirement for a uh, or at least a partial waiver from fringe requirement for multi-family. Uh, I'm throwing out an example, let's say somebody's got fifteen acre piece of property, a thousand feet of frontage. There's single family homes along the road and what they want to do is trying to keep the frontage. In the same character as a single family. Ho- homes, create four single family home lots along the front. And then have a hundred foot driveway that goes back between two of them and opens up into the multi-family and back. Just, I, I think there's some, I think when you don't have the ability to grant waiver. That you can limit yourself and kind of compel somebody to do something that may not be in the best interest of anybody. Um, and, and you don't want to make them go through a variance process because they'll never qualify for the variance.
So you're suggesting to put the waiver language in there?
The, that the board would have the authority to grant at least a partial waiver from. The fringe requirement for multi-family development. And it needs to be in, when it's done as part of the plan development, so it's.
Well, that's, that's judging by the character of the neighborhood, right?
Right.
Yeah.
I, I like the idea of giving more flexibility to allow more um, options for multi-family and I. I think that it's a balance of it being by right versus being um, having to be, go through some sort of review process.
Yeah, I think there are definitely changes that address that, Sarah, specifically with. The two family now being permitted as of right, so just go through building department review. Um. Obviously, multi-family, I think typically you would find them had go through a site plan review by the planning board or whatever entity. Um, but two family dwellings. Yeah.
So, okay, so, so Richard, you're suggesting that the multi-family for like rural residential um. Be her by special. By waiver?
Um, again, that is, there's, the frontage requirement is rather significant. And right now, as Ken's drawn and designed, it would default to the fringe requirement of the underlying district. And I'm suggesting that the board simply be given the authority to waive that, to reduce that front requirement. When it's appropriate, given the character of the neighborhood and the plan development. That is, that's involved.
Yeah, I, I think that's good, and Ken, I mean, I like, I am in agreement with the changes you made in terms of. Um, the, the two family and everything, I, I think that's good personally.
Well, that should certainly, changing the two families should certainly open up some interest along the college highway area toward East Stanton. And some of those. Uh, smaller lots that really are in commercial that you can't really put much commercial in there. Okay, anything else, Ken?
No, other than I'm here, um, if you have something that you're thinking about. Uh, or after this meeting, as you continue to wallow in some of this new language that may, maybe um. You know, it could be um, trying to figure out how you're um, maybe pushing this towards a town meeting and. Thinking about how to, to pass it, um, but I'm here for. Thinking about how to to pass it. Um, but I'm here for, you know, that consultation later on too. However, you think um, I could be useful and I'm happy to help um. But, yeah, I think I will send this off to you. I'll I'll find some language regarding that waiver language that Richard had suggested. Um, for this section, and I'll send you both the track change and. The clean copies for both the multifamily dwellings and the accessory unit.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Um, anything, Richard, that you think that before he closes out that um. Contract that.
I can't think anything at this time, no.
Anyone else?
Look at the material he's got drafted, though.
Because we will be meeting again on um. Twenty first, you're only available the second meeting of December, right, Ken?
Yes, typically.
So we'll be meeting on the twenty first uh, in case something comes up, if Richard has any other.
That's my birthday. I'll be happy to spend it with you.
Well, we'll put you right up front and get you out in about ten minutes.
Ken, you're too young. Your birthdays don't count.
Um, I'll let you know, Paul, too. The thing is. As I mentioned, the first Wednesdays are typically with another board, but I haven't heard anything. And I'm usually only there if they have public hearings, and they would have had to post, so.
I'll I'll leave it up to Richard to review your draft there. If there's anything else that we need to tie up before the contract. So thank you very much.
Can you just email me that the draft?
I will. I'll I'll email you and Paul, and then you can disperse however you'd like.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good night.
Have a good night, everyone.
Okay, I guess that's about it. I got a question before Richard leaves us. We have I had an inquiry come from a subdivision that was built many, many years ago back. I think it was probably in the mid two thousands, Red Brook Estates. And the homeowners association uh, president. Send an email. There is retention pond within the jurisdiction of our HOA on Three Sarah Lane. The pond has never had water in it. And I've been nominated by the HOA to ask for a waiver so that we can remove the fence. The fence needs repair right now and is in and all of the trustees, including the homeowners on the property of the retention pond. Want to remove the fence. Are we okay to remove the fence?
It depends. Was the fence required as a condition of subdivision approval?
Yes.
If it was, it's my opinion, they have go through the process of mending the subdivision approval, which could be a. Burden they don't want to deal with. In order to legally do that.
Because it because we've we've had them over time and Paul, I think uh. You can back me up on this. We've. We've had issues with fences before, but we've also waived them, correct?
I think so. I think it's um, it's a. Let's step back um. Sarah Lane is not the Red Book, then Red Brook Estates.
It's not Red Brook, I thought it was.
No, that's.
Dear run, I'm sorry. Dear run, yeah.
All right, um. So. The wrong consideration we should, I'm running into some other jobs right now where um. Stormwater basins, I believe this state. Um, regulation that states that. A certain depth of of water that's encountered needs to have a fence around it for protection. Um, so. That was one of the. Triggers that uh, probably made them put one in. Uh, to be frank, it should probably go back to the set engineer. That designed um, that basin and the fence that goes around it to make that statement. So they can say it's not necessary based on whatever depth of water they would have there.
Yeah, and it it also should look at the slope of the basin as well. What what the um, um, angle of the slope is.
Paul, I just go back from the very beginning. Did they say that? They don't feel it's necessary anymore because why?
Well, the number one, she said there's water that's never been in it. And number two, it's falling apart and they don't want to repair it. They'd rather take it down.
Okay, so I I think that goes back to the engineer, most likely anything else to make a statement on it's. On the applicability of the fence. Yeah, a state from a state regulation standpoint.
Okay.
But the fact that it's deteriorating, they don't want to repair it. Wouldn't be a factor I would suggest you consider, but rather simply whether it's a necessary element.
Uh, would you repeat that?
I would not consider the fact that that's in disrepair, they don't want to repair it. I would only consider whether or not they, there is a need for it. As termed by.
Okay, I'll reach out to the uh. President there and give her that suggestion and maybe they can get a analysis from the engineer. Okay. That's about it. I've got for you tonight.
Well, there's something I want to bring up.
Oh, go ahead.
Well, you know, on the um, Red Barn project, the issue of the stormwater bylaw. Board is a word. Bylaw provision in twenty twenty one and lack to the general bylaw. And the general bylaw says you need to have regulations. The planning board has not printed developed regulations govern the stormwater. I would urge the board to redraft up some regulations based upon the old zoning bylaw. And input from whomever you wish. And have the board hold a hearing as soon as possible to adopt regulations to govern applications and criteria. Additionally, I'd suggest the board should look at. Rewriting the by general bylaw that was developed approved last year because it's missing some. To me, essential elements such as. It doesn't say what the criteria are for the board to make a decision on stormwater permits. And that's kind of fundamental, in my opinion, to any type of rate toward bylaw. Uh, but again, first step, I think the board really does need to. Have developed and adopt following public hearing. Stormwater bylaw regulations.
So. I'm I'm. I'm pretty unclear about this whole thing. Because we we went through this exhaustive process with this MS four thing that went dragged on for months because Cindy Palmer sat in. Uh, with PvP set that was working on that. And after the final product came out, it did go to public hearing. And it was going to be put in the general bylaws. So all this took place and all the while, while we still had our own. Stormwater bylaw that was in zoning. So it goes to town meeting. I I thought the whole thing was a done deal when it was on the warrant, but they said that. What the the resolution was in and not the criteria or the the regs like.
I don't know who drafted the general bylaw, but in my opinion. It's very, the general bylaw is very poorly drafted. It doesn't, it doesn't include some essential elements. And what I suggest and but it does authorize the board to adopt regulations. And I would suggest the board adopt regulations that would govern applications and at least. Bandage over this gap that currently exists.
But but in the in the interim, Richard, if if we've only got one. One legal bylaw on the books, which we have the stormwater. And erosion control, that's all we we can ask an applicant to deal with. We can't hold up a project because the town screwed up on it.
No, it would not apply. Only thing you can go by is the general bylaw that was adopted in last year. That's it. The zoning bylaw was repealed in its entirety. Attorney General approved the. Motion, the article that repealed it and adopted the general bylaw. Um, so you had to go by the general bottle that was adopted. But it gives the authority to adopt regulations, and I suggest the board needs to adopt the regulations that would supplement that bylaw.
I guess we got to put that on the docket.
And if you want me to, I can pull together a draft of regulations. Uh, I can reach out to Ken at DVPC and see if they have. Uh, regulation that were developed uh, so that I can. Put that into it and then we can schedule a public hearing. It that regulations don't have go, do not go to town meeting. Regulations are adopted by the stormwater authority after holding a public hearing.
Right. Go for it. In the meantime, I'll talk to Randall and tell him of your. Your plan here and go from there.
Yeah, and also then we should look at rewriting the general bylaw to make it clear what. For for the next town meeting.
The general?
The general bylaw needs to be rewritten. Because criteria for decisions should be in there. There are some missing elements in that bylaw.
All right. Okay.
That's all I have.
All right, thank you.
Good night, everybody.
Uh, Paul, I just have one other thing to.
Yeah, I've got a couple other things anyway.
I'm going to email Paul. Paul, I'll email you the uh, draft decision as you approved it tonight. And then you can review it and make sure I address the buffer correctly and uh, then you can sign and get to town clerk.
And then what is it, fourteen days?
No, you had to have it in town clerk later than uh, December first.
No, but the appeal period.
There is no appeal period. They, it does, it goes back to chapter forty eight, section seventeen. And they just simply have go through court process. Typically, twenty twenty days is what to go by.
So she doesn't have to wait to authorize after the appeal period?
No, I I if it's me, I'd wait three weeks and be sure nobody's going to sue, but yeah. And ground's going to be too frozen anyway to do anything, probably.
Okay, thank you. Um, some more agenda items. There was a building permit in my box and it was well below the uh, stormwater threshold for a house. At eighteen Crooked Ledge Road, Davian and Robert Properties. Uh, building a house there on a small eighteen crooked ledge, so I approved that per um. Board, okay. Uh, we covered the waiver, the fence at Red Brook. Um, I had an additional change order for the E code for all the work that uh, we. We have done on bylaws leading up to when E code started, that's we're sent over. And we got a estimate of twenty nine hundred, almost three thousand dollars for additional. Fee that E code is going to charge the town of Southampton. Most notably, the planning board, because. It was not included in their original contract with the town for the general bylaws. So had we been upfront about this to begin with, and we were invited into the game early. We probably could have saved three thousand dollars because the town would have picked up the entire tab, but now I've got to take it out of our budget. So I had to refile for um, ARPA funds to see if we can come up with the three thousand dollars additional. Um, on our tiny budget we have to work on. And. Other than that. That's it. Oh, actually, I've got a warrant. To pay for the Daily Hampshire Gazette, which is for the two legal ads for the Red Barn Storage and also. Rattle Hill Road Solar, eight oh one twenty eight. So I just need a. Motion to approve, and this, by the way, is paid by the applicants. So eight oh one twenty eight uh, for approval.
I'll make that motion.
Motion made in second and to approve Daily Hampshire Gazette bill eight oh one twenty eight. All in favor, Dan?
Aye.
Sarah?
Hi.
Paul?
Aye.
And I'll I'll say aye. And now, Sarah, you have something.
Yeah, I just, I've, I think some people know, some people know I'm moving. And so. We actually are closing on our house in Southampton, um, just early December. So. I just sent over my letter to Ed, CC and you, Paul, um. Formally resigning um, for my conversation with Ed. That's what was needed. So I just want to. Let everyone know, and you know, I've learned so much, you know, in the year and a half I've been on the board. I really appreciate it.
Well, we've learned from you as well, at least I have.
Thanks.
It was nice to have your expertise on the board. And hopefully, the gentleman up there in the right hand corner of the screen will give serious consideration unless we scared him away tonight by some of our. Uh, sometimes it gets a little contentious, but not not too bad. But Sarah, yeah, thank you and good luck to you and your family and enjoy your new uh, your new uh, life in the hills.
Thanks, yeah, a little more rural, but we're excited.
Are you still going to be with O'Connell?
Yeah.
Good.
Yeah, a little bit of a further drive, but not bad.
Well, congratulations and happy holidays to you.
Thank you.
So now, with that, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn.
I'd make the motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion's made in second. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Uh, thank you for joining us, Mr. Herman.
Glad to meet.
And we'll be back again on the fourth of December and the, or no, the fifth and the nineteenth. So if you want to. Zoom in again um, and.
This government meeting is brought to you by Eastworks and our local cable subscribers.